Give everybody a couple of minutes to get situated there. Hello, Sarah. Hello, Jack. All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Carver Board of Selectmen October 29th, 2013 meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bear with me, please, this housekeeping list seems to be getting longer and longer. There are openings on the following committees: Audit Committee, Bike Path Committee, Business Development Commission, Carver Cultural Council, Carver Housing Authority, we need a state representative, Commission on Disability, Earth Removal Committee, you grow as representative, Finance Committee, Local Housing Partnership Committee, Marcus Atwood Trustees, Old Colony Regional Voc Tech School Committee, we're looking for two positions, and Town Building Study Committee. Please contact the Selectmen's Office for an application. Also, donations to the food pantry can be made at the Council on Aging or the public library. And the Police Department has recently installed a secure prescription medication disposal box in the lobby. This box will allow citizens to dispose of unused, unwanted, or expired prescriptions, medication in a safe and secure manner. Medication can be dropped off anytime, please, no needles or liquid medications. Things that you don't want around the house, you don't want kids getting into, or somebody else. Please feel free to stop by and drop those off. As far as the donations to the food pantry, I can't emphasize strongly enough how important it is, especially as we start to enter into the holiday season, that everybody dig as deep as they can and be as generous as you can. There's still a lot of people out there that are hurting, and it's incumbent upon us to take care of our own here in our community and make sure we get them through the holiday season. So, please be generous and donate what you can. Okay, on October 24th, 2013, Carver Assessing Department Assistant De Vassino received the Clerk of the Year Award from the Massachusetts Association of Assessing Officers. How about a round of applause for De? Ellen, is De here tonight, or?
I'm sorry, just.
She did. Oh, my goodness. Okay, all right.
Thanks for attending.
Okay, that's fine. At least we were able to recognize her accomplishments.
Yes, thank you.
So, before we get started, is there any committees that have to take a vote to get started, or?
You don't have a majority.
You don't have a majority, a quorum? Okay, all right, we're good to go, then. Items for discussion and possible vote, we have review and recommendations for special town meeting warrant articles. Jim, were you gonna kick that off?
Any way you'd like, Mr. Chairman. As I did explain at last week's meeting, Article One is a request to transfer from available funds a sum of $30,295.89 for unpaid bills from prior fiscal years as listed on the warrant. It would take a nine-tenths quantum vote of the town meeting to approve, Mr. Chairman.
This is a pretty standard article every town meeting, so.
Right.
Any discussion, buddy?
I make a motion, we approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second.
We have a question, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Gods to the funds for the Norfolk Ram bill.
Yes.
I haven't set, I haven't been able to get my hands on the set of June financials. Was there were savings at the end of June 2013 that got rolled up into free cash?
No.
There was no savings. So, we had roughly about a $95,000 budget, and we're going over by about $30,000.
But I think what happened to is the previous year, because this happens every year, the bills from the previous year get paid in 13,000, 15,000, 12,000 bills. So, that's, so it basically, it just is a moment.
Yeah, but I think we need to do is get a handle on it. If we get a statement from Norfolk Ram every single month, it would have shown that these bills were outstanding, and we could have kind of let it fire and get them paid before the end of the fiscal year. So, it'd be great to avoid this in the future.
I think I had mentioned that before, usually funded out of a reserve fund, don't you?
Yes.
Typically?
Typically, it was something that reoccurred every year, which we also tried to address in the past, that having tighter controls over Norfolk Ram's billing process would be helpful, especially during the budget process.
Mr. Chairman, I think at a prior meeting, I told you I'd had such a discussion with Norfolk Ram, and actually, at an afternoon meeting today, Selectman Hewins was, I was present, I made the same point to, I think Mark Bartlett is the president, is he of Norfolk Ram? By his own admission, certain of these costs are predictable, and whether there are cost overruns or not, a lot of the inspections are done, certain inspections are done on a quarterly basis, and others are done on a semi-annual basis. I repeated to him that there's no reason whatsoever, you know, why we can't get some sort of a reconciliation on that, so that we can either encumbers some funds, or settle things up, you know, prior to the end of a fiscal year. This thing just keeps rolling. This thing just keeps rolling forward, and honestly and truly, all it is is management at Norfolk Ram and management here paying, you know, paying more careful attention to it, putting it in their diary and making sure it's done.
Any other questions or concerns? All right, hearing none, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Genomous. Article Two.
Mr. Chairman, Meg, can you cover this for us, please?
Meg, why don't you come up and join us anyways? There's probably gonna be numerous questions.
Use the microphone.
Okay, so basically, what we have to do is we voted the budget for the North Carver Water District at the June Annual Town Meeting. At the Annual Town Meeting, part of the budget was being funded from retained earnings. And as it happens, in fiscal 13, the revenues for the North Carver Water District did not come in where they were projected to be. So, they stayed within their budget, but their revenues did not come in where they were supposed to. So, what ended up happening was that they had a retained earnings deficit, and so that means that there's no retained earnings left. We can't, whatever was appropriated at the June Annual Town Meeting, we cannot use, it's not there. So, we need to revote it. And the only funding source that is available is free cash. Because if you look at the budget, there's no place that really can be cut. The majority of their budget is debt, utilities, and the contract with small water systems to monitor the water. So, that's what, that's basically what this is.
Do we have a motion on this?
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and as a matter of interest, I submitted a disclosure statement to the town clerk concerning my relationship with the North Carver Water District. As a police officer, I on occasion work details for them. So, just for disclosure. Yes, sir.
And you had handed out, handed out, I didn't bring it with me this week, on the projected deficit that we're gonna have here. Right now, we only have 100,000, but basically, isn't the North Carver Water District, is it an enterprise fund?
It is.
And so, generally, they would have to fund their own operations. So, in essence, we're giving them a subsidy by using free cash from the general fund. But going forward, I think you had said that there's gonna be potential deficits of 250 to 350,000. Is that correct?
250,000 for 15 and for 16, and then fiscal 17, some principal payments related to the debt kick in at 100,000, so that 250 goes to a 350 deficit.
And I don't think that's a manner for discussion now, but I think we should put it on a future agenda, have Meg come back, and we can look at it in more detail.
And we need to have.
Right now, I think she's got everything resolved.
Yeah.
But in the future, you know, future meeting, we need to have her come back.
Get the Water Commissioners in also.
Right. Yeah, that's gonna have a significant impact on everything else we do, so. Other questions, concerns?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question with regards to going into the town meeting last year, the Finance Committee brought up the North Carver Water District budget quite a few times, because the numbers kept moving. The town meeting floor, we asked if we had the right numbers, and it just seems like with 11 months behind us, it's June, and we didn't know that we had this deficit going into the end of the year. Are there any answers we got to what revenue dropped off?
The problem at that particular point was that revenue, that all the cash receipts had not been posted, so there was no way for my office to be able to determine where we stood with cash receipts, to see that we had fallen so far short of the projections.
Okay. We've had a lot of turnover and everything, too, I think, John, so I think moving forward, the new team in place and everything, they'll have a much better handle on it, and hopefully we'll be able to jump on these things much quicker, so. Anything else? Hearing none, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Genomous.
Mr. Chairman, the, while we have recommended Articles One and Two to be funded from free cash, I'm a little late, but in saying so, but free cash was certified today by the Department of Revenue. Good work by Meg, turnaround in 24 hours from the time of visitation from the DOR. The certified free cash amount is 843,269. Eight four three two six nine.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Meg.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll apologize to Meg in advance. Selectman Franny asked me to ask this question, and I didn't in a meeting at four or five o'clock today. Under Article Three, the transportation revolving account for the Council on Aging, that's the transportation account and not the meals?
It's the GATRA.
It's the GATRA account.
Mm-hmm.
And how does that, how does that fall into deficit? Do we have an agreement that calls for annual, an annual allocation that we tripped, or do we have a reimbursement agreement for expenses, or?
Well, we have a reimbursement agreement, so there are certain expenses that are reimbursed, and then there's another portion of it where it's, the expenses are anticipated to be recouped from user fees, so I know that they will pay for a bus pass, but then, if some people are unable to pay for that, they get a subsidy, and so, we paid the full amount, but we haven't gotten, well, we haven't received the full amount back. And so, there's been a deficit that's been growing over the years in that account. So, this would clear it up, and then the idea would be to, on the go-forward, is every time we have something where we don't get reimbursed for it, would be to charge it directly to the Elder Affairs Budget and keep it clean, so it doesn't keep falling into a deficit.
Did, was it a deficit when the DOR looked at it, that they deducted off our free cash amount, you know?
Yes, yes.
So, we're getting hit twice by it. We get less free cash, and we're using free cash to bring it up there.
Well, that's true for this one year, though, just to clean it up, and then the idea would be, don't have that happen again.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I was talking to Jim, I said there should never be a deficit in that account. I wasn't aware of the subsidized program, and where you'd normally find the deficit would be in the meals revolving account. So, I kind of thought there was a mistake made, but.
You can, Mr. Chairman, you know, you can, from time to time, run deficits while you're waiting reimbursements and things like that, so a deficit at any point in time, at any point in time, is not, yeah, but at year-end, you know, when you.
Normally, you wouldn't fund it with special town meeting thing. Something like this, you would be, so.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve?
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion, comments, recommendations, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Genomous.
Make the municipal insurance revolver, five, four, six, seven, will you?
I believe that that was a bill that was, that should have been charged to the budget line, the budget insurance line, but was charged to the IOD, and it just wasn't picked up by year-end. But that again, it's another one, just to clean it up, and then on the go-forward, make sure it doesn't happen again.
Oh, jeez. There we go. While we're talking about cleaning up certain things, Meg actually has a laundry list of things to add, to clean up, not all of which made this a particular warrant, but I think piece by piece, you know, going forward, Meg will, Meg will, you know, keep introducing those things until we're all caught up. I think you had a list of about six or so included, you know, about half that.
So, we would have to address them in a future special town meeting, which we usually have.
Even a Chapter 90 deficit stuff, you know, that you're, that you're on, that was probably the biggest ticket item, but we're kind of nursing free cash here for, you know, for your spring town meeting, so.
Because what I think people need to understand is, when those deficits, and they exist, they get deducted off of free cash, so you might have had a higher free cash figure if you didn't have these deficits.
And that's why I'm trying to clean them up, so that we don't keep paying the price, 'cause I mean, we've been paying the price, we've been hit every single year.
Every year, these have existed?
Deficits have existed, and we've gotten a hit for it.
And do you know how much they amount to?
I don't off the top of my head.
Okay. Okay. Can you just tell me, do you know what free cash was last year?
It was like 706,000.
So, we made more free cash this year?
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause my concern was, is generally, at the Annual Town Meeting, we use free cash to fund different warrant articles, so.
Sure.
That makes me feel better.
So, we're on Article Four.
Yes. Well, just a point of order, Mr. Chairman, was the vote taken under Article Three for the entire article, or for Part A only?
The entire, I was making a motion for the entire.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That was my impression.
I'll go with a question.
Article Four, we have the new lineup to.
I've got it on the table, as a handout over here.
We got a handout.
Is that an updated?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the, we're proposing more than one funding source for certainly these articles, Mr. Chairman, the $3,000 from free cash for fire operating expenses. The next two items are separation expenses for the DPW Superintendent and Police Chief, and the payment of certain of our accrued benefit responsibilities for the present chief. The DPW salary, Meg is projecting a 60 to 62,000 surplus this year in the Plymouth County Retirement Account. And since the separation expense is synergistic somewhat with retirement, we decided to recommend half of that projected surplus for this. The police salaries would be a free cash hit, and Selectman, other professional services would be for grant writing services for our annual submission of community development block grant applications. If you have any questions on that, Jack Hunter, I think, is here, and he might, we might call on him to answer that. And I guess in this year's operating budget, certain of the library salaries, was it longevity?
Longevity wasn't.
Longevity payments weren't picked up, and so, there is a, you know, a five-year-old article balance under animal control holding facility, so Meg has suggested 7902. So, the free cash hit, you know, if you keep in a tally, under Article Four, if passed, would be 41,000. There'd be a transfer from pension account of 30,000, and a transfer from an article balance, Article 27 of the 2008 Annual Town Meeting, of 7902.
So, the total free cash hit was 41.
Forty-one. Three thirty and eight.
I make a motion, we approve, according to what's presented on the draft Article Four.
Second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jack?
A couple of questions. The $8,000, is that going into a line item that's a general fund, or is it gonna be like into an article where we carry it from year to year? 'Cause I think before, we had amounts of money.
Article Four by its, Article Four is intended to supplement certain operating budget line items, so I guess, you know, the answer is it would go into a line item account, either under Selectman or Town Administrator's account.
Because before, I think we had an article set up that we carried from year to year that had monies in it, for grant writing fees. Maybe Jack knows that.
I do, I do know that there's an account out there, I mean, if the expense was absolutely, and we knew it was gonna be paid this year, it could go into this line, but I mean, this isn't written in stone, I mean, this could, we could change this and put it into an article, I suppose, 'cause then.
Can we do that?
Well, because you could.
We'd have to change it.
It's a better idea, it's a better idea to go into an article.
Because then it wouldn't close out at year-end.
Have we put ourselves in a box here with the warrant posted?
This wasn't attached to the warrant that was posted, though, was it?
This was, well, this wasn't.
But we can't make a new article.
No, but the article didn't address it. This is being presented for explanation period purposes, so. I'm only saying that I know that we always had an article that had grant money, and we would use it as we get different grants, instead of trying to come back and find it in a line item.
I wasn't aware of that. It's no wonder we couldn't find it in the operating, in this year's operating budget.
Are you familiar with looking under articles?
I do know that there is one out there, but I, I mean, I didn't know what it was, what it's for, there's no history with it.
If I had chief had to leave, he would have known, I think, so.
Is that right, huh? Well.
The other, the other thing is the library salaries, every, they're all, every one of them is longevity, there's no other ones?
It's all longevity, none of the longevity was included.
And is it for the clerical union, or who's it for?
For everyone in the library. Whenever, when the budget was drawn up, it was just, the longevity was left out.
So, there's contracts in place that support this? It's not something that's gonna be in the future?
Right.
Okay.
That got overlooked?
Is that a question now to Meg?
I've been forming that, I heard Meg correctly, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That she had said that the whole longevity was overlooked in the budget last year.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
Mr. Chairman, has anyone gone, we're three months into this year, we've got obviously nine months to go, eight months to go. Has anyone went to these department heads and said, "Manager, manager bottom line, we've got these additional expenses, let's cut the existing budget areas that we can before we go looking to hit free cash." I mean, some of these items, we could hold off on, go to the reserve fund for, I think, if we came to the point, six months from now, that we truly had certain deficits. With DPW salary, don't we have a savings regards to where we're coming in that position? Do we have to draw this money down?
I think, maybe the replacement came in right away, so I don't know if it was a savings.
The, we shaved that, the actual separation expense was 36,000 dollars, and, you know, in accordance with the philosophy you just espoused, I thought that, you know, we, they can make do with, they can make do with 30, that someone acting in interim capacity, you know, that there might be some savings squeezed out there, and they just have to tighten up, you know, as best they can in other areas. But to my knowledge, I can be corrected on this by probably everyone in the room, since I'm such a latecomer here, but I think the, with the 79,000 article, 60,000 of it is in separation expenses, and both of those separations occurred after town meeting, to my knowledge, or right around town meeting time, so.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, library salaries, we boosted the library budget for 2014 because of a, either a promotion, I believe. Looking at their departmental expenses through September, I mean, they're not spending rates fairly well, I just was concerned if someone's done the exercise that went through these budgets to see if there's any savings.
At this point, no.
Okay.
Any other questions with regard to Article Four? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Michelle, I'm gonna recuse myself, because it deals with police salaries.
Mr. Chairman, on the point that Mr. Carter just made, we're two weeks from town meeting, I will have that discussion with the, with the library folks, and if we can put some down with pressure on that, you know, possibly to amend it by town meeting time, then, you know, then we'll do that. Point taken.
Thank you.
Article Five.
Article Five is as close to a must-do as you can find, Mr. Chairman. It's an estimated 6350 expense to do, to update our actuarial evaluation of our OPEB obligations. And I used the word synergy, synergistic earlier, the recommendation is that this would come from that same Plymouth County account with a projected surplus of 62,000.
I make a motion, we approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further questions? Jack?
I just think that, you know, either Meg or Jim could give a further explanation to what this actually is for people at home, so they understand when they come to town meeting, what they're voting on.
The, there's an acronym called OPEB, O-P-E-B, it stands for Other Post Employment Benefits. There are obligations that employers have to their retirees going forward, so this OPEB calculation is almost entirely, not entirely, but, you know, the overwhelming majority of the liability is for health insurance for retirees and future retirees. The feds imposed a rule, I think about, I forget how long ago, in the very, in the very recent past, that said that although you don't have to fund your OPEB liabilities on an ongoing basis, you now must list it on your financial statements. When you list it on your financial statements, and any time you go out to the, to the bond market, you are guaranteed, I know from experience, it's a guarantee that you're gonna have that conversation with, with the rating agencies, and, 'cause the underwriters are gonna wanna see what you're, what you're doing about it. So, while they're not mandating that you begin to fund this future liability, listen, you know, for all practical purposes, you really have to. There is an obligation to do an actuarial evaluation of what your, of what your future obligations are going to be, and this, I presume, would be our first update of that.
I think it's a second update.
Second update, okay.
And can I ask, you know, 'cause Meg will really be in charge of this, that when it's done, they generally can do a presentation with you, could you have them come in front of the Board of Selectmen?
Absolutely.
And do the presentation here, so we can get a feeling for it?
Absolutely.
Many communities, as long as we're talking about, you know, going forward, sometimes, I did it in Ashland last year, we, we had a one-time cash windfall, and we created, because time was relatively short, you know, it occurred in October, and we had a November special town meeting coming up, we set aside 400,000 in a special purpose stabilization account. That's really just a temporary holding account, you know, we considered it a temporary holding account while we were developing a trust. But there wasn't enough time for us institutionally, you know, to educate ourselves about the intricacies of the trust, much less educate the public, you know, in a four or five-week period of time. So, the objective was, you know, park it into a special purpose stabilization fund, and in the following year, put it into, put it into trust. And Jack, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We actually have a fund that we set up.
Well, you do.
The purpose, and what we were gonna do was put our reimbursement for Medicare Part D in it, but it was a great idea, but we never did it. But the fund is set up anyhow, so.
I don't think that Medicare Part D, that's an excellent route for that Medicare Part D reimbursement from the feds to take, but I just don't see that thing lasting. I didn't agree with it in the first place, but we took the money, you know.
And what the Medicare Part D reimbursement is, is people on Medicare, they have to pay Part D, which is for drugs, they have to go out and get a policy for it, but the municipal policies are so generous that we actually get reimbursement from the federal government for what's paid in those premiums, and there's always been a little dispute in other towns, not in this town, is the money coming back, whether the retirees are entitled to something like that, but we take it all, and we put it in our general fund and use it for, I think it flows into free cash.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I, do you mind if we continue the dialogue? The, um, the answer to that again is, you know, that path for Medicare Part D, uh, money is going into your, uh, OPEB trust. That assures-
That's where it should go.
Yeah, uh, that's really where it, uh, that's really where it should go. Now, in operating budget terms, uh, maybe you do this already, but you wanna separate your active employee, um, uh, account from your retiree account. And you make your retiree payments from your budget through the trust, okay? And at year end, if you're projecting any kind of a surplus-
It stays there.
It, you can park that into the, all or a portion of that into the trust, and that's how you get a continuous funding mechanism for, for that. We oughta save these for one-on-ones, I'm sorry.
Well, we're all getting an education here, so.
When they come to do the valuation with us, we can ask a little bit more deeper questions.
Yeah, you might wanna reform that, your annual town meeting, uh, warrant next, you know, the, the operating budget under health insurance, was that nine-ten or nine-on-one or?
Yep.
And, um, you know, in that fashion, and maybe make it an organizational objective that you actually establish a trust at your spring town meeting, so.
I think that's a good idea. But, further questions?
I'm all set.
Article Six, Mr. Chairman?
We gotta take a vote on it.
Oh, I'm so sorry. No action yet.
All right. No further questions? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous, Michelle. Okay, now Article Six.
Well, Mr. Jim, and I saw a beat-up generator down on an old country, down a dirt road across from Cranberry Village last week, but I can't tell you much else about it. Uh, I, I understand you lived through a generator failure, uh, last year, um, or in a storm within the last few months. I'm a little concerned, uh, that, um, uh, with the twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, figure, I think you might wanna bump that up, uh, a bit because, um, Building and Grounds Superintendent says he has an estimate, uh, for a new sixty kilowatt, uh, generator. Now, this is an estimate. This'll probably be subject to a sealed bid requirement of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. That doesn't leave you any wiggle room in case the bid doesn't come in, uh, quite right.
Does that include all the services that are supposed to go with it, the electrical and?
That is my understanding, you know, that the, uh, now, all of that said, uh, along with, um, today's free cash certification, the Cranberry Village Water Enterprise Funds, um, uh, ending balance is, um, a certified balance is one hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and three dollars. Now, whether it's twenty-five thousand or some other number, that is the, uh, the recommended source of, uh, of funds, but, um, I'm a little uncomfortable with a-
That's not what the article says though, does it? From available fund, you're gonna change it to come from, uh, Cranberry Village, um, enterprise, is it?
That is an available, that is an available fund. Available fund is a-
Yeah, but we have to, we have to name it.
I'll ask counsel if we can perfect that with the motion.
I think you have to, we always name it, where it's gonna come from free cash.
It is an available fund. The motion itself, I would suggest to you, would say to transfer from the Cranberry Village Water Enterprise account, the sum of X number of dollars, you know, to fund it. I think, I think that works.
That's, that's what legal counsel had suggested, that it remain vague on the warrant for now in case a funding source needed to change, like.
But when we make the motion to town meeting, it's gonna be-
It's the, it's the motion that carries it.
Yeah, the motion perfects the-
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if I may, what number do you recommend there, Jim, that we put in? Thirty thousand?
Yeah, um, and the unexpendited balance can fall back into the, uh, can fall back, we can close it out next June thirty.
I make a motion that we amend that to thirty thousand dollars.
Do we have a motion? I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Questions, comments, concerns, recommendations? Hearing none, seeing none, on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous, Michelle. Okay, on the article itself? Am I all set with that? No other questions?
Uh, we're going to come in with a solid number and a solid motion on where that funds are gonna come from.
Correct.
Yes.
At town meeting. Okay.
Well, I think we have to set it at thirty-
Well, the number would be thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars tonight.
Okay, all right.
Then we would seek sealed bids.
Right, but on the floor of town meeting, Dick, it's gonna be from the Cranberry Village Enterprise Fund.
Yep, okay.
Okay, um, all right, hearing no more questions, concerns or recommendations on that. All those in favor of Article Six, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous, Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Article Seven.
Mr. Chairman, I've got, uh, uh, it's a little embarrassing. Article Seven and Article Eight are projects that have already been completed. I understand the, um, uh, perhaps paid for out of this year's, um, uh, building maintenance account, one ninety-two, uh, account. Article Seven and Eight were actually, I, I understand, on the annual town meeting, uh, warrant, and, um, for one reason or another, were not appropriated at, uh, the appropriations were not made. And, um, the Article Seven figure, by the way, was at, um, I think at that town meeting, at twenty-eight hundred dollars. That was the estimated expense. I understand that we were under, uh, a DEP order to clean that tank. It's been cleaned and flushed and they did, they flushed out lines apparently down to the housing complex and, uh, in other places, so, uh, the work has been completed. If the bill has been paid, I'm not sure that it has or hasn't, um, then the, um, you know, then the, uh, you know, we reimburse, uh, perhaps the, uh, one ninety-two building, uh, building maintenance account.
So, the money's already been obligated. I don't know, it's the work is completed.
We've incurred the, we've incurred the expense.
Yeah.
And the work has been satisfactorily completed.
I make a motion, we approve Article Seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further comments, concerns? Jack?
Where, where, is this at Cranberry Village or is this in the municipal complex?
The town.
Okay.
I remember, uh, Mr. Chairman, I remember a lot of discussion on the need for that to happen in the tank over here in this system, so, had to happen.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another area that Building and Grounds budget for two thousand fourteen, we beefed up. Looking at the financials through September right now, um, the spending, it's behind in spending. Are you saying that these bills have not been paid yet? They've been encumbered, not paid?
I don't know the answer to that. Meg and I did talk about it this afternoon, did you?
One bill was paid in September, one bill was paid in October.
So, the bill for September was paid, it's in your financials, but you're still low in spending.
The five thousand fifty-six hundred dollar one, that was the one that was paid in October, so that probably would throw their budget, I'd have to look at the October financials, but that might throw their budget over.
But there's other line items on there versus, versus doing something with available fu- funds, might be free cash, is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Again, other sources would be coming to the, um, Finance Committee for Reserve Fund Transfer to fill these holes or go back and look at these original budgets and see if there's any room to offset some of these costs.
Uh, typically building, uh, I'm, you know, I'm really a, very much a part-timer, so I'm not, I don't have intimate knowledge of your, uh, of your operating budget, but typically, uh, building maintenance budgets, uh, you know, your expenses, you know, don't go out on a straight-line basis from one month to the next, the winter months naturally, where, you know, where heating demands and, uh, fuel-adjusted power demands, unless you're in some form of a, you know, an energy contract, you know, are at their highest, so, uh, you know, that line really peaks for about a five-month period of time, and we haven't hit that, uh, time period yet. So, um, perhaps your experience with prior budgets, maybe it's, uh, low for this time of year, but, um, compared to other years, for that, you know, same three or four month time.
No, I see what you're getting, but I don't look at run rates three months into the year, because like you said, they're misleading. I remember the whole budget process and there was an increase in the building maintenance budget.
There was.
Okay, sizable increase.
All right.
So, we also have some of these other, other items on here that I don't think, and I apologize, Meg, this is a different financial format that I'm, I remember seeing each month. But it looks like we have these other articles out there for the HVAC, police station, roof ambulance, seal code and repair parking, and something at the annual town meeting for a hundred and forty thousand, eight fifty? Hundred four thousand, eight fifty, Article Seven for annual town meeting.
Those things are, either contracts have been awarded or, or about to be awarded, uh, and then-
I don't know if there's any movement there, if we need to find funds.
Bids are in on the, uh, on the HVAC and roofing, uh, for the facilities you just named, and then for the council on aging stuff. I think today, um, uh, I got a recommendation that Jack Hunter gave me for the senior center roofing. Yeah, that was a pretty good bid, by the way. Uh, it came in at a, uh, at a pretty good price, and the electrical work, Jack, there's a, there's a pre-bid conference, when?
Pre-bid's already happened on electrical, the deadline is, uh, Friday?
So.
On the COA?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think the COA gets paid. Isn't it being funded under the CPA?
Yeah.
So, it really wouldn't have anything to do with-
Oh, it is, huh?
This budget, building the grounds.
What about the HVAC and roofing work for?
I would just encourage the exercise of looking at the existing budget again with building grounds to see if there's way to pull costs in.
We'll do that.
Three months to go. And again, feel free to hit the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, you know, if, if these ones can't be saved.
Your reserve fund begins at what number?
It starts at one twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
I think we're down to, you recall eighty maybe in the end?
Only fourteen thousand's been used.
Yeah, that, not much has gone out of it, so.
Okay.
Well, maybe between now and town meeting.
Precisely.
We can come up with something.
No, I'll be, I'll be glad to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous, Michelle. Article Eight.
Um, Mr. Chairman, the radiator has been replaced on the, uh, generator on the donut shop side of the police station.
The important side, the donut shop side.
Is that so?
Is that a dig, is that a dig?
Oh, jeez, I did donuts and police in the same sentence.
Let's chief do it, boy, when I need him.
That was really bad form. I apologize.
I make a motion, we approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
In a second. Further questions, comments, concerns, recommendations? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Michelle, I'm gonna recuse myself, police man, so, especially the donuts.
Mr. Chairman, Article Nine, um, uh, was initiated by the, uh, Board of Assessors and Director of Veteran Services. At last week's meeting, uh, we talked about the adoption of the, um, uh, of the senior tax program and the parallels really between the senior tax program and this one. It was very interesting. I learned, uh, last week why you set a five hundred and ninety-five dollar, uh, ceiling, uh, on the, uh, on the senior tax program. For those of you who either weren't, oh, there you are. Thank you. I'll keep quiet. Ellen, um, please, you're the proponent of the, uh, of the article.
This is something that the Board of Assessors has wanted to do. Um, we wanted to do it last year and, uh, it's now, we've put it before you because we actually already have twenty people interested in the senior work-off program. And, uh, we, um, I believe, we explained last, or somebody explained for me last week, um, that the reason the, the five ninety-five was to keep it under the six hundred dollars and the, um, the minimum wage in Massachusetts was, uh, six dollars and change then. It is now eight dollars, so we did eight times seventy-five hours to make it the even six hundred. And hopefully, we would be able to do that again for the veterans, so that they can work off some of their taxes, um, their property taxes. And, um, I'm sure that, um, there's a, a need out there for them, you know, maybe we could get them to wash windows in town hall. I don't know, but, um, something of that nature, and, and I hope that you will all, um, approve to do that.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? Jack?
You know, since I lost the election, I've been traveling to a lot of different town halls in the state, and a lot of the town halls have the seniors down in the lobby to direct people where to go. And that might be a good idea to have them do some stuff like that, and a lot of them also give, um, a thousand dollars a year. So, we should probably think of maybe raising it up in increments, maybe go to eight hundred dollars a year, 'cause I think certainly, I mean, these are, these are seniors that live in their homes. It's not people in the mobile home boxes. So, the more we can do for them, I think, um, for what we can afford to do. Do you have an estimate of what the cost was, Ellen, the la- last year?
Well, what we have budgeted in the past, um, is six thousand dollars a year for the senior work-off program, which would only allow ten seniors to earn six hundred dollars a year. It does come out of the overlay account, um, which is one of the reasons that the Board of Assessors is, um, such a proponent of it, because they, that is their, under their control. And, um, we could certainly increase the amount. We can increase the number of, uh, participants. The board did not take a vote on, um, you know, any caps or anything, and both of them, uh, could certainly do with an increase.
Absolutely, but that's in the discretion of the Board of Assessors. It's not something that would take tonight as, as far as how much money you're gonna increase it to. Is that true?
No, I, I believe it would be, um, initially, it would be a vote of town meeting, and then we would probably want to ask to have it increased, you know, at, at the annual town meeting for FY fifteen. The reason we did this during the special town meeting was so that we could implement it this, in this fiscal year, in fourteen.
So, can you, even though this is on here and it doesn't have any amount, can you include veterans in it?
This is for the veterans.
I know it is, but I mean, there's no amount here.
We, uh, we can amend it at town meeting.
Okay.
You know, that's, if, and if any of you have any thoughts about, um, you know, we thought we would do the same.
Oh, absolutely.
That was our, our thinking was, you know, ten veterans at, um, six hundred dollars apiece for this fiscal year.
More than ten veterans?
I'm quite certain that we do.
All right, so maybe I'll come in and talk to you, and I'll come up with a game plan for town meeting.
Kenny Morrison could probably give you a pretty good idea of how many veterans own their own homes, not exclusive of, uh,
Well, we also-
manufactured homes, yeah.
We also have, um, figures on that, because every year we s- we have the, um, service-connected, uh, veterans with service-connected disabilities. And so, we do submit, um, those to the state for reimbursement every year as well. And there's, we have a lot of veterans in this town. And, uh, we need to take better care of them and better care of our seniors as well.
Just, just this service to our country, what's going on right now.
Absolutely.
They're all deserving.
Mr. Chairman, um, a point of information, I, if my reading is, is correct, uh, upon acceptance by a town meeting, am I right or wrong on this, Ellen? It, it seems to me that it's the, that it's the selectmen that established the cap, not the Board of Assessors.
And that's fine.
We can put our heads together. I'm sure we can come up with something.
Yeah, because we're gonna, we're gonna have a meeting. We're having a meeting before town meeting, so maybe we could, I'll get together with you.
Before town meeting, right, Jack?
Yeah, regardless, regardless, if you get this, if you get this accepted, you got the flexibility-
Right.
To set a number up to one thousand dollars.
Yep.
Yes.
The statutory cap is a thousand bucks.
That's correct.
All right.
And it comes out of the oval license.
Right, so we need, we just need to make sure that our overlay is adequate to handle it.
You got wiggle room on the recap, too?
Wiggle room on the recap, never.
Come on.
All right, moving along. Questions? Comments, concerns? You guys are too easy tonight. Andy?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Ellen, this pertains to any veteran, any age, the, not just seniors, right?
Well, it's, it is intended, I, I believe, for seniors ages sixty and over. However, uh, that being said, I'm not sure that, um, I'm glad you asked that question.
Just a point of clarification, because that wording isn't reflected in the article. So, I didn't know if it pertained to every veteran, which you define by me.
Me too. That's what I understood at the beginning.
Well, the way you interpret it, this could apply to every veteran.
Yeah.
And there's a separate article for the seniors, so.
Okay, just a different clarification involved.
But I think that was, I think that was the intent though, wasn't it, for, for it to apply to every veteran?
I meant to bring my, my little printout with me.
Chairman, uh, uh, we can all run to our, I go on mass.gov and look up the Mass General laws, um.
Yes, um, Lynn just gave me a copy.
Oh, you could, okay.
Yeah, I left mine on my desk.
Chapter four. Chapter four, section seven.
Well, this is under chapter fifty-nine, section five N.
Yeah, but allows veterans as defined in clause, in the forty-third clause of section seven, chapter four. So that may tell us if age is a factor or not, I suppose, right?
Yes, well, it lists all the, actually, I believe it lists all of the wars that you can be a veteran of, which includes Gulf War and Desert Storm and a lot of those. So those would tend to be younger folks, I would think. Younger than sixty.
That's what I was thinking. A lot of them are coming back now.
Yes.
Maybe if they have some disabilities, they could maybe take advantage of this program.
Well, there's always been a program for the disabled.
Yes. If you have a service-connected disability.
Just a quick question, sorry.
Nothing is quick around this place, Andy, I don't know that.
Thank you, though, Andy, for asking that.
Meeting's over, then. Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous, Michelle?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thanks, Ellen.
Article ten.
Mr. Chairman, Articles ten and eleven, I think there are at least three people here more qualified to talk about this than I. Jack Hunter, yourself, and Sarah Hewen, particularly with respect to Article ten. Eleven, I think, Ellen. Please, please stay for, yeah, please, yeah.
You want me to help, Mike?
Well, just as a matter of general info, before we kick it off, let the public know that we've been interviewing firms to set up a solar array on top of the North Carver landfill to generate some monies for the town. So, and Jack and Sarah and I have been sitting on a panel to do that, so. Having said that, Jack, take off.
Right, we put out at your direction, Mike, a bid, RFP, for solar panels on the North Carver landfill. We received two bids. And I believe the selectmen appointed Sarah and Mike as a subcommittee to look over those bids. We interviewed both firms. We asked for some follow-up information and we met today. And you've made a preliminary recommendation, you still have a couple more questions on. And so, either way, regard, you know, we didn't know when we wrote the article who you were going to pick, but you have to lease, be able to lease the landfill to a private entity. And that's what the intention of this article is. And it gives the selectmen the power to do that once a contract is finished and you're ready to lease it.
And I think Sarah's got some information you want to add to this, or?
If it's appropriate. Yeah, in the sub.
It is, yeah.
Okay, well, in the subcommittee, we met also today as well. And so what's happening is that Southern Sky has offered the town a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot program initially. And then Soler America/Intero offered the town a power purchase agreement. And what we asked of each of them was, you know, what, how much, what's the financial benefit to the town in either case? It was a little hard to compare because one's a pilot program and one's a power purchase agreement. So then, the last time we, when we interviewed the two companies, we asked Southern Sky, if they were going to sell us electricity, what would be the savings to the town? So we could compare that with Soler Intero's savings. And so they came back and told us that. And the answer is a little bit interesting because the problem is if they sell us energy in a power purchase agreement, we will be way beyond our capacity because we are still in a contract with Intero to actually build panels on Mike Paddock's bog. The only way we'd be released from that contract is if Soler, America, and Intero build on the landfill because it was the same, one of the two companies that's proposing this landfill is the same company that had been at the Paddock's bog. And, you know, there's no reason we would want to buy more energy than we need. And so essentially, what it came down to is that over twenty years, and Jack, you help me out here if I don't get it quite right, Soler and Intero would save the town one point nine million in electricity bills. And Southern Sky would save us seven hundred and fifty thousand over the life of twenty years. So clearly, Soler and Intero, it's the better financial deal for the town. That was what we concluded, anyway.
I should add, if I may, Southern Sky was selling the electricity off-site.
Right.
And so they were offering a pilot for a lease and taxes is what that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was over twenty years.
And that's the gist of?
Now, the caveat is, you know, now that you've made this recommendation, we have some legal questions we've got to get through, we have a contract to get through and after town meeting, then you would have to decide whether the contract was acceptable, whether the lease was acceptable, and that kind of stuff.
Just background information for tonight, it's not a vote for tonight.
So is it a pilot or is it not a pilot?
Well, that's Article number eleven. It's been my opinion and through Ellen, thank God she's here, that if you develop solar energy on your own property and used it yourself, you were exempt from taxes.
As a municipality?
As a municipality. Well, anybody, actually, any private person. And Ellen's been of that opinion as well. But when I went to get this article written with counsel, he disagreed with that. So I didn't know who they were going to pick until tonight. And if it was Southern Sky, you had to have a pilot, and that would be Article number eleven. Now I'm thinking you may need to have a pilot if counsel convinces Ellen otherwise. And so I'm going to recommend after we found out that you picked Soler, that we have a phone conference. And I think we're going to try to do that next Tuesday with K and P. So to see where Ellen stands on this after she hears their arguments.
So what that means is that even if we have to have a pilot with Soler Intero, they'll still, we'll still be getting more money.
Correct.
By going with them.
Correct.
And just as a point of information, when we did the Southern Sky one, we had tax title counsel do the pilot for us. So you might want to consider them too because they already have all the wording and everything put together. Then reinvent the wheel with a new legal counsel, and I think Ellen dealt with them as well, too.
Yep, so. We've got to first determine whether one's necessary. We'll know by town meeting, and if we need one, we'll have one ready for town meeting.
And Article eleven will give us the impetus for doing that, so. It's still appropriate, no matter what.
Yeah, I wasn't sure until tonight, but now we know.
If you're going to have the pilot, you need to have everything in place, so.
Right.
Do we want to just lump Articles ten and eleven together, or?
Sure.
Do you want to table them till our meeting, before the town meeting?
No, no.
No, that's not necessary.
I think all this does is authorize us to enter into lease agreements and a pilot program. That's all it does. It doesn't.
You don't have to.
Force us to do it, yeah.
Yes, John.
Mr. Chairman, does that mean that you would not be pursuing the paddock bog if we go with the North Carver landfill?
They would remove us from the contract.
Yeah, if we go with Soler Intero, that's correct, yep.
So it kind of takes care of a number of issues all at once, and I think it's a win-win for everybody, so, at this point.
I make a motion, we approve Article ten and Article eleven?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that. Any further comments, questions, concerns, recommendations? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous, Michelle. Thank you, Jack, thank you, Ellen. Article twelve.
Mr. Chairman, as I learned at our TOPS meeting, town-owned properties, meetings of late, we have a piece of town-owned property identified on map sixty-two, lot sixty, one sixty-seven, also known as Four Oak Drive, Carver, Massachusetts. We seek authorization to transfer, or to convey that property under certain terms and conditions to be determined by the selectmen, to be in the best interest of the town. I suggest a chapter thirty-B land disposition process. I got a look at the site today. It's, as I understand it, it's a fifty by one hundred foot lot. A building is, that once stood has long since disappeared. And the butters on either side pretty much occupy the, pretty much occupy the lot. We'd like to put the lot back on the tax rules, certainly give, you know, some folks the opportunity to, you know, to purchase portions of that, portions of that lot. So it's, you know, getting a piece of town property, town-owned property back on the tax rules.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments, Jack?
And you know, from following the procurement laws, especially in the sale of real estate, you have to follow certain procedures and certain notifications. We had an incident several years ago where a piece of property, and none of that was followed. It was called Thirteen Birch Terrace. There's actually a special general's ruling on it, they can get off the website if you want to read it. It would be like a cheat sheet to tell you all the things you need to do so you don't fall outside of the procurement law.
Sure. There's a, there's a section heading under thirty-B, you know, about disposi, you know, about land disposition procedures.
Yeah, you can follow that, or you can, you can read the other thing just to make sure it's like a little checklist for you.
That'll be for my successor.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, Michelle. Thirteen.
I think this is where I get to kick back and listen, Mr. Chairman, right?
Mr. Ryan, would that be you?
Article thirteen was recommended by the Town Building Study Committee to the Board of Selectmen or an advisory board to the, to the selectmen. And, you know, based on a couple of items here. So a site had been identified going back through studies that had been done by, for both the police station and the fire station. So originally, they had identified the site, which is ninety-nine Main Street, as a location. And in April two thousand and eleven, there was a plan put forth with the Capitol Building, the establishment of the Capitol Building Stabilization Fund, to be able to fund future building projects within Proposition Two and a Half, which was an important point. And the need has been confirmed through, you know, multiple studies that have been done at the, at the site there. So given that, you know, the current site was inadequate for the, both the police and the fire, and a new site had been identified and a funding source had been established and committed to for the last three years, the Town Building Study Committee was recommending that we move forward with the fire station.
Do we have a motion on this? Move it to open it up for discussion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Jack?
You know, with that thing that we followed in April of two thousand and eleven, we have approximately about four hundred thousand dollars in cash flow. And I think you're going to try and use a future debt expiration of about two hundred and seventy thousand. It gives you six hundred and seventy thousand. Steve Prada told me there might be another big payday coming along, about three hundred thousand dollars. If I knew that that would be available, I wouldn't have any opposition to this. But what I'm afraid of is that we're going to get to the annual town meeting, you know, similar to what happened to the seven hundred thousand dollars, that it all gets gobbled up. I'm afraid that if we move forward with this and the money isn't available to pay for the debt service in the future, it might take, to bail us out of it, it might take a Prop Two and a Half override to do that. Well, there's been other solutions recommended that the state step in and take the money out of our distribution, so. And that, with a balanced budget in place and that already committed, that might mess up a lot of things. So for that reason, I'm not in favor of this.
Other points of view, comments, concerns, recommendations? Dick?
I think we're at a point in time, and the Building Study Committee has studied this pretty hard. They've been pretty confident in their recommendations. Their recommendation, obviously, is to move forward on this. It is not going to interfere with the future possibilities of our school project because that's in the state's hands still right now. We need to move forward here on, on one of these building projects. And so this doesn't commit us totally to moving forward, but it allows us to start to put pieces in place. So I thoroughly support it.
Go ahead, Ellen.
I ditto Dick's comments that it's been made clear that this is just a step in the process and that the, the Building Study Committee will have to come before the Board of Selectmen again to get approval of the sums of money. We have to get, we have to move forward on these projects. All of a sudden, you see what's happening with the North Carver Water District. If we don't start moving forward on these projects, all of a sudden, it's going to be a perfect storm. And I think the Building Study Committee has done a fantastic job in terms of outlining the path of the revenue sources and that, again, we've got that stepping stone where they still have to come back to us to get approval to borrow. So I do support it, Article thirteen.
Sarah?
Yes, I too support it. And I understand that it, it's, we have to believe in the will of the, the goodwill of the people at town meeting. And I think that that is there. I think they will contribute to this fund. They've done it since the beginning. And it's under the levy limit. It's hard to improve on that.
Finn, come.
With you, Mr. Chairman. I know we've got really two big projects, obviously the fire station and the school. I guess my question would be with regards to the school project. Is there a timeline that, I know we're still in the plan for the MSBA to get approved, but will we have an answer in the next three months? And then if, maybe, so pretend Sorrell could respond.
Come on up, please.
And if I may interject, while Liz comes up, that, that can't be funded under this, with this particular account. It's just not enough money.
I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met informally with MSBA about a month ago. And they informed us in the next day in an email that they will notify us either in late fall, which we're about to get out of, or early winter. So it's, they have a board meeting in November and a board meeting in January. So we will know by then. The encouragement they gave us is, we put you on the first list of schools to be renovated or rebuilt seven years ago, so we can't imagine that you wouldn't.
Need it even more by now, right?
Yes, so, I mean, they didn't promise us anything, but.
Sure.
So I do think we will know something by the latest mid-January.
But if they did tell us we were in, I guess we have to look at the rebuild renovation option, maybe other options. This could be a while still, another six months before another, either the same alternative or another alternative comes up.
Well, you know, we're part of the Town Building Study Committee. We haven't met with the Collins Center yet, and they're going to make a recommendation. We do know that, and from the MSBA website, in two thousand and nine, it was still a hundred dollars per square foot cheaper to renovate, add. And now it's about a hundred and fifty dollars cheaper to renovate addition rather than new construction. So the town will just have to weigh, you know, there are options based on the Collins Center. So it's still cheaper to do the renovation addition, but maybe the town of Carver wants to do a whole new building. That'll be up to the town, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Aren't we better prepared or better positioned to move forward with a renovation project than we would do a whole new school?
We are completely ready to go. It's, there's a few things they've added in the building code that weren't there before that we would have to do. I have a complete list of what's done and what would need to be done. But it would be a very quick turnaround. You could have a vote to appropriate the money within six months.
So could you just give me an idea, if we were to move forward with a renovation project, how long would it take to bring it to a vote and then completion of the building versus building a whole new structure someplace?
We would be ready to vote at the earliest by June, but no later than September.
And is it longer to do a renovation project than it is a new building?
It depends on the site.
Okay. Okay.
You know, because it's the amount of site preparation that has to be done. You know, we know that we rebuilt, replaced the septic on that site. We don't have to do that on a new building. We've had the geological testing, we've had the water in the wells tested, and all that would have to be redone at the new site. Twenty-seven months is the prediction for the renovation addition. I would guess within the same timeframe. You know, it was twenty-five months for a brand-new school at that point on an unknown site. You know, we did look at a new school, but we, the site preparation, you know, you have to prepare for that, and I don't have, I don't have any hard figures on that.
Okay.
Just to follow up, but what you were saying before with the rebuild and renovate, possibly by June, there could be a vote on going forward with that?
Right. Based on us completing the new requirements that weren't there in the building code, you know, designing.
But if, but if another option came up, are we talking another year possibly?
It would be a year. Well, it took us eighteen months to get to where we were this past time, but part of that was the fact we were, we had went to the public three times. This would just be one time.
And with regards to this vote at town meeting, if town meeting decides to go forward with the fire station, any idea when we'd stop building? Is it, is it six months away, three months away? Does it? The, the, no, the, the-
Fire station.
The fire station.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Supposed to yell then.
So the folks at home can hear me. It would, you'd have to establish the committee first, and then again, as it was, as the selectman was saying, it's up to them to decide when to authorize the borrow, too. So I think we'd make sure that all the, you know, the i's were dotted, t's were crossed before we make the decision of how to, when to move forward. But, and then again, you'd probably wanna talk to the fire chief about their plans of when you would go. So you have to authorize the, the article first at town meeting or pass it, and then it's up to the selectman to, to form the committee, which probably could pretty much start. And then once everybody felt comfortable that, you know, the funding mechanism was, was good and such, then you would authorize the bond.
Okay.
It's gonna take a little while to do that.
Thank you.
Other questions, concerns, comments? I'm a little nervous with this North Carver Water District and the information that has been provided to us in recent time, and the future projections for the deficits there. Combined with the health care and the pension liability, potentially get nailed on that, too. But this article is not a definitive commitment. It's a step forward. So hopefully by the time the dust settles next spring, we'll have a clearer picture of what's gonna happen, when it's gonna happen, and how we're gonna fare on this. So then we'll probably have to make some tough choices. But for now, I think we've got a little momentum going here. I think we need to keep going in that direction, otherwise we're never gonna get anything accomplished. So any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, seen none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We're all done on the articles? Anybody need a two-minute break?
Yes.
Okay. Two minutes, seven any-
(inaudible).
Okay, folks, thank you for your cooperation. Try and move this along if we can, it's already eight-thirty. Next up is items for discussion and possible vote. We have the Town Council Services, Contract Renewal and/or Replacement. And speaking to this issue?
I put this on the agenda, I've had it on it a couple times before. I'd like to just move forward and have a request for proposals on this, but it seems to get bogged down all the time. So I put it on the agenda again to see if we can make some progress on it.
Do we have a motion?
To get started, I'll make a motion to request proposals for Town Council Services.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all right. Further discussion?
May I?
Sarah?
First of all, I, I don't know whether this is relevant, but there's nothing on the agenda that talks about a request for proposals. And secondly, we did do this some time ago, was over a year ago, and we had a number of applicants. And according to the requirements at the time, Coleman and Page was the only applicant that met all our requirements. So I don't really know why we're even suggesting this.
I know I brought it, I know I brought up the, the reviewing the contracts and bringing in new proposals out of prudent behavior that any organization should abide by. When you have a vendor that's been in place for, I believe it's over fifteen years now, things become complacent. You need to mix up players. And I, it's a prudent, a prudent business decision to do this. So whether we end up staying with KMP or we go with the new vendor, it is a smart business move to at least investigate at this point in time. So I will continue to advocate for that. As a matter of fact, when I was doing some reading on a lot of the municipality procedures and processes, many of the things that are instituted in the municipalities always states to contract for three to five years on various committees and, you know, different contracts. So there's a reason why it's listed in municipality processes that contracts shouldn't exceed five years. You need to revisit things, and I don't think there's anything wrong with it. I think it's a smart business move.
We don't have a contract with Coleman and Page. They're not a contracted service.
Well, you know, the Mass General laws, and I don't know, I don't have the sighting, but when you have purchases of five thousand dollars or more, and they ask us usually either with the town accountant or someone, you need to have a contract in writing. And so if you're saying we don't have a contract, we might be in violation of the procurement laws. And the other thing that, and I want to question Sarah specifically on this, the last time we met, you were gonna get a ruling from the Ethics Commission on whether or not you could participate in this. And as you know, you're a member of a group that's seeking to form a collective bargaining unit, and it's still out there, and Coleman and Page represents us with those negotiations. So it's, it's my feeling, and I don't know what your feeling is, that you could be violating the ethics laws.
Well, I don't have a feeling, Jack. I got a ruling from the Ethics Commission, and they're all set with my being here. You, feel free to check with them if you want.
Well, we, the last time we met, we waited for you to provide a ruling to us, and you never did that, so.
It's my prerogative not to disclose that, but if you wanna check with them, make a complaint, whatever you wanna do, you may, but I'm all set.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
And I'm gonna recuse myself, and so the motion will fail. Moving on. Audit, auditor, contractor, RFP. Optional selection of two areas to be audited.
I put this on there, when we originally went out for the RFP, we put in there as part of the requirement that we could add two additional areas to be audited. And I don't know if Meg's still here or not, but I wanna get a copy of the contract, look at that, and then come up with the two areas that we'd like to see as additional audit it. But it looks like Meg isn't here, so. Do you have any information on that, Jim?
Uh, no. You have a, you have an auditing firm now, and you're talking about expanding the scope of services.
No, in, in, in the RFP we put in there, they have two additional areas that we could have looked into. And I wanted to be able to make, you know, come before the Board of Selectmen and see what two areas we wanted to do, but I wanted to check the contract first and make sure it was in there. And if not, if there wasn't a contract, I wanted to get a copy of the RFP that went out so we can check that, so. And maybe you can do that for the next meeting.
Between now and the next meeting, we'll transmit those things to you. Do you want hard copies or electronic copies?
Whatever you wanna, whatever you wanna do.
Whatever your preferences are, Will.
Probably electronic might be easier.
So you want the, the RFP and the contract itself, and this on, on the next meeting agenda that is after the town meeting?
Yeah.
On the meeting agenda after that? Okay.
I make a motion, we table until Jim's able to secure the additional information.
Second that.
A motion and a second to table. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, seen none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion is tabled. Departmental consolidation review of options.
I put this on here, too. When the DOI did their report, they recommended that we form a finance department. And in reviewing the ways to go about this, I came across two other areas. And it is a long process, but I figured I'd throw it out on the table for us to start working on. I know Helen's been working on interviewing different departments, and this is just part of that overall process. The first one is Section eleven, and that concerns municipal finance. It says here, consolidated department of municipal finance, which may include the offices of accountant, auditor, art controller, treasurer, collector, and assessors. Section twelve involves consolidated department of community development, which may include the redevelopment authority, the planning board, the industrial development commission, industrial development finance authority, or any other municipal office or agency existing or authorized to exercise any community or economic development activities. And then, Section thirteen, consolidated department of municipal inspections, which may include the inspections currently being made by the building inspector, wiring inspector, plumbing inspector, gas fitting inspector, health agent, or others as the ordinance or bylaw may specify. Just wanted to get it out there for the selectmen to start, you know, deciding what they wanna do.
What are you suggesting that we should do for what you'd consider the next step?
Well, I'd like to look at all three areas. Is Jack Hunter still here? I spoke briefly to him about the consolidated department of community development. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but do you wanna speak to it, or you don't wanna? Probably don't.
I don't know what you want me to speak about, Jack.
Well, considering the areas that are involved in, would you be opposed to us combining that into a consolidated department? Or too early for you to really consider it?
Well, certainly too early. I mean, I'm doing it now. So I staff every one of those that you've mentioned, except maybe the IDFA, which meets about once every ten years.
Well, I was gonna recommend that we abolish that, but then when I saw this, I said, you know, you might be involved in keeping it alive to use it as a tool for potential financing in the industrial areas, so.
I take it under advisement, but I don't know the benefit of formalizing it. I think it is kinda formalized in my job description. If there's another benefit I'm, I'm missing, I'd be glad to hear it and open to anything that, that expediates.
Helen has been working on interviewing a lot of the departments, and like I said, this is part of it. I just wanted to further put it out there because in researching for the finance department, I looked at these other areas as well, too. So like I said, I wanted to introduce it to the Board of Selectmen and see about moving forward with something like this, especially in light of all the work that Helen's already done, so.
We met, I don't know, a year ago, or less than?
Well, sometime after town meeting, why don't we set a date where we can review the information that Helen has put together or whatever, and then make a decision what we wanna do. Yes, Mr. Bassell?
Mr. Chairman, just some general observations, if I may, on consolidation to this type. I think if you're trying to initiate the discussion, Jack, perhaps a good way to focus that, and you could jump up and try and poke me now if you want, but-
No, I don't. I value you.
You might wanna talk about a charter.
Well, I've, I've been talking about a charter for years.
Yeah, charters give you, charters give you the ability, you know, to kinda frame the organization's future, uh, future goals. Things like the, like a finance director in a finance department-
Mm-hmm.
-work exceptionally well on a bigger scale than what we're operating with, uh, here now.
Exactly.
Because inevitably, it'll cost, at the outset, on this small scale, it'd likely cost you more money, you know, to get the caliber person or to build a career ladder for an existing staff person to, to get there. But the charter is a vision document, and, you know, you can pound away on a, on a regular basis that, you know, we're so many years away from, you know, from this. You know, you can help shape that future, state that future by charter. Here, if you do it by bylaw on, you know, on this scale, it's gonna be a difficult, you know, some of these things will be difficult to fund.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's remarkable that the Community Development Department, in large part, without having hard, you know, defined lines of authority, seems to, you know, seems to function a little bit, a little bit like that. I think that's a plus for you. You know, your finance department has had some, you know, has had some turnover in some areas, but it's not without talent, and it's, you know, and it's possible for you to grow into something like this.
Well, you know, and usually, and I always argue with Rick about this, I wanna have a treasurer, finance director, and he wanted to have a town accountant, finance director.
Yeah, I'm an accounting guy myself.
Which is, which is usually the case, and like you said, you have to go for the specific talent. And I think you can see just from the caliber of the town accountant that we have here, she's a certified public accountant, that we're well on our way.
Yeah.
If we were to go the route of accountant, finance director, just be, we need to add money in there, so. That might be the easier of all three to go, although what Jack has under his wing in just formalizing it in the charter, but I've always been a strong proponent of having a charter.
Yeah.
So we can leave it, just have to pull some-
You know, as a vehicle, you know, even for that discussion, some sort of a charter commission, whether you end up with a charter or not, sometimes it takes a couple times through before the public actually embraces a charter idea. But that's where you have these vision discussions, and you can actually set it in stone that, you know, and provide for an organizational framework. At some point in time, your town administrator or manager can propose to the Board of Selectmen certain reorganizations, you know, that you don't need, you know, town meetings and, and home rule petitions to the legislature floor, you know? So-
And there's a lot of-
You're suggesting your path.
Well, there's a lot of advice at the DOI website as well, too, for, and just your own experience, I know you're gonna be moving on, but, because it'll only be a couple of weeks, three, probably three or four weeks before we get in, someone to sit in your place. But I know that from your background, you, I think the last, you know, last town you worked in had a charter, didn't they?
Yeah. I'll tell you what, the, the longer you stay in this business, if you're fortunate enough to actually progress, the jobs you seek out are in chartered communities.
Yeah.
Uh, 'cause the lines of authority are very clearly defined.
That's right.
And if the, if the manager respects the board's prerogatives and the board has a similar respect for the manager's prerogatives, it's amazing how, you know, how things can, you know, can operate. So chartered, chartered community jobs are the most coveted one, you know, in my profession.
And that's not something that's gonna happen overnight. That's gonna take two or three years to formulate the whole thing.
Uh, right, but it's, you know, I, I don't know what else to say. You know, the last, three of the last four jobs I worked had, you know, had charters, and it was, I, and it was great. It wasn't always fun.
Yeah.
You know, this business, you know, isn't always fun, but-
At least I wanted to broach the subject, and now we're gonna make another step forward, so.
I would urge this community to take it serious. Like, you may well be ready. Let me be very candid with you all, you know, the, the, you know, political division, you know, that, you know, philosophical division that there is right now, probably makes this a really opportune time to initiate a charter discussion. It's probably a good thing.
What are you talking about, Mr. Bassell?
Something that was painfully obvious to me my first ninety- Something that was painfully obvious to me my first 90 years.
All right. Think on that note, we're going to move on.
Don't we work with it?
We work well. Jack, you willing to table this until sometime after town meeting?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we table it until
Motion to table.
Sometime after town meeting. Hopefully Jim will still be
Motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling this, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Moving on. DPW department, potential executive session. All right.
Did a, DPW want to come up here?
Yeah, I think they should come on up.
Sure. Any preference on our seats?
You can sit, you can sit
Someone in there a microphone?
Use the microphones.
Okay.
Maybe you don't want to sit next to me.
Did your third commissioner leave?
Yes, he did.
Okay, so you don't have to worry about a quorum and calling yourselves to order
They have a quorum.
Well, actually
Oh, you do, yeah.
Technically, we do. It takes the vote of two. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman and distinguished board, elected officials, and esteemed residents of Carver. My name's Pete Donnelly. I'm on the board of commissioners and I'm here with J.D. Kelly. I'm sure most of you know him. So, we're here to answer any questions or concerns about the issues you brought up.
I, I put this on right from the onset. Number two, I think, I'm going to ask the table that because I think it could get into areas of violation of the open meeting law, so I'm going to strike that. But number one, the permanent interim superintendent replacement. You know, I always thought that you people had the authority to do everything, but then I've seen this email, Rick LaFawn got in May 12th of 2009 that says, you know, that you're not the sole, you don't have the sole discretion to enter into a multi-year contract with the superintendent. So, I just wanted to find out where we stood on the interim superintendent, not that I'm opposed to him or anything, but just to keep transparency, you're going to be going out and advertising for a permanent superintendent. So, I just wanted to get some answers on that because I hadn't.
Okay, well, let me give you a little overview of what we're, what we have going on.
Okay.
What we've done is that we, based on the positions, and I don't know if we can discuss personnel or we want to do that?
You've got to be careful.
No, okay.
But you, I mean, I asked
Well, the purpose is to, to appoint an interim, because of the, the time that we're dealing with right now with the snows coming, as a matter of fact, I think I heard that we may get some very soon, we definitely need some, I know. As a matter of fact, I campaigned on, on you won't have any snow like last year if you elect me again to the board. I don't know if it worked or not on
And we get buried, right?
Yeah. But what we wanted to do is have an interim individual in the position so that we can get through the next six months or so while the process works through to have a full investigation, determine exactly what we want in the, in the superintendent's position, and then have it presented to the board for approval along with the town administrator, although I know at that point, Jim, you won't be here, but, you know, thank you for your guidance, let's fire on this. So, we wanted to have that position, have it a limited timeframe, say six months, so that both parties know that there is an end to it, it won't be floating as an interim forever, and have that position at that point. Now, if necessary by agreement, we could extend the period beyond the six months, if by agreement of both parties, but I don't think that that'll be the case. I think right now, our major concern is to make sure that during this period of time, which is one of the most crucial for the department when the snows start flying, that we have someone in place that's familiar with operation. So, that's our
And I, I don't object to that. I just wanted to get a clear understanding how the boards would work and function together. Because like I said, I thought it was strictly within your purview to do these and that doesn't seem to be the case. So, we need to clear up these types of things to see what's going on here.
Okay, and maybe that is
I agree with you as far as whatever you think is necessary for the interim person to be in there, because this is the biggest part of the superintendent's role probably is in the snowplow area now.
Well, and I think that the issue you raised is begging the third point too, is the functionality of 585 and its role with the commissioners and within the town.
Right.
So, I don't know if that's something that would be addressed here or an executive session and then roll it out once there's a thorough understanding. We don't have counsel here to address the issues, although we have perhaps an email. But there is some ambiguous language in that and we definitely want clarification.
Exactly.
So
I, I know that the 585 came into existence in 1971 when there was probably only like 2,000 or 3,000 people that lived in town. I don't know how many lived in town, but it, it's probably in need of an update or, you know, what of a direction we determine to go, you know, an update or dissolution or whatever. And I know you don't want to hear that word, but I think we have to put everything out on the table.
Sure.
Have a frank discussion about it.
Absolutely, no, I appreciate that. A couple of points I would raise though, as far as the function of the board and why we exist, we act kind of as a sounding board for the superintendent on various issues, not so much in the day-to-day operation because that's really in the hands, but we're involved in the bid process and approving the bids that come in. And my belief is that the more people that have input into an issue, the better.
Yes.
You know, because why don't we have just one person on the board of selectmen because five people input is better than just one, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. In addition to that, as a member of the joint transportation planning group, which I am, and in unison with the work that Jack Hunter has been doing also, thank you very much, Jack, we have been instrumental in helping the Route 58 project come along.
Uh huh.
A position that probably would not have been filled necessarily had we not had a board of commissioners to have the superintendent tapped to use as a resource to attend some of these meetings so that we know what's going on and get our voice heard and try to draw the funds in from the state to get Route 58 done, so. And finally, particularly in, it relates back to the first issue that we discussed is with the superintendent leaving, more so than ever, Billy Howland was around for a long time.
Yep.
And Billy had many aspects of what he was doing was on autopilot because he'd been around for such a long time. Well, now particularly with whomever it is, whether it's an interim person for six months or whether we bring in someone permanent, they're not going to necessarily have the, either the on-the-boots, the boots-on-the-ground knowledge of the operation of Carver in particular or of the administrative aspect of it. And so, now I think now more so than even in the past, the function of the board of commissioners is going to become more important in, in helping in that, in that guidance.
You know, my concern, I'm chairman of the town administrator search committee. When I see a memo like this, you know, what was, what was bothering Rick in dealing with your board? Not that you've done anything wrong, but if there's a way that we can maybe take that thing and clear it up so that the new town administrator has an easier time dealing with your board or dealing with the superintendent, you follow what I'm saying?
Well
I'm just, I'm just trying to make it easier to, you know, move this thing along so the new person coming on board, we can clear up a lot of different areas that make it easier for this person to function in their position.
Well, I'm always in favor of streamlining, streamlining operations. I'm just not sure if you're saying streamline it to the point where we function more efficiently in unison with the board of selectmen or you're talking about streamlining us out of a position?
No, I'm not. My, my whole thing is, and I think you admitted to it, that 585 is somewhat confusing and so if we can somehow clear that up and make it more transparent, you know, you can deal
Sure.
Better on a one-on-one basis with the town administrator.
Well
I'm not saying that Jim had any problems
In fact, Mr. Purcell had something he wanted to interject into that, so.
Mr. Chairman, first on the functional relationship between the DPW and the board of selectmen with respect to the superintendent's contract is as follows. The DPW commissioners are indeed the appointing authority under, under 585. The, but a subsequent act of, of the town in 1973, two years after 585 passed, made any non-union contracted employee regardless of their department of origin, except for the school department, that contract subject to the approval of the board of selectmen. So, in this, in this instance, if the DPW commissioners choose to not have a contract and have that, have their new superintendent operate under the town's personnel bylaw, then it's theirs, it's their call all the way, okay? But if they want a contract, then frankly, the board of selectmen have, you know, a certain amount of leverage in the, in the selection process because the end result is the contract has to come here, add to the table for ratification. The commissioners have been very open, very cooperative in this, in this transition period, you know, recognizing that. I think the preference seems to be that, you know, that they want to have a contracted employee because that's, that's how you attract, you know, the best quality people. And so, to that end, in this transition period, we've agreed with the DPW commissioners that let's take a look at this job description, step one, okay? Because the organization needs certain skill sets in place, okay? They were not required when Bill Howland, you know, first accepted the position of DPW commissioner back, I don't know how many years ago, there was no such thing as a GIS system, for instance, okay? So, some of the skill sets that the, you know, that this organization, not just the DPW, but this organization needs is we need GIS capabilities just to be able to operate a system. I mean, people are, you know, people are plotting out stormwater, you know, discharge locations, catch basins, streetlights, you know, is a, is a management tool. It's a, it's a huge thing. We need a desktop down there, number one, you know, before we talk about a GIS operating system. So, we're changing, you know, we'd like to affect a change in the job description so that, that modern-day technical skills are apparent, that procurement skills are apparent. They can be acquired, by the way. And I understand the incumbent interim is already, you know, pursuing GIS training and, and things that, you know, if he's, if he's wise and he seems to be a smart guy, you know, he'll, he'll go full bore, so, you know, make himself look better when the, when the process reaches its, its conclusion. We've heard a lot about the North Carver Water District tonight and we have to undo things. Well, you know what? You've got, I know you've got a separate, separately elected board of North Carver Water commissioners, but we could have a full-time DPW person being a resource to that group. We're going to have to undo their entire operating budget
That's right.
At town meeting, start all over again. Having touch meetings, you know, making sure that the, you know, being of assistance to those commissioners and making sure that the vendor is acting responsibly. I saw the vendor's original contract today. There's a whole lot of responsibilities that they have to discharge in that scope of services and I don't know that, I imagine all that stuff's being done, but I don't know. And I'd just like to have somebody who can put an arm on them, you know, on a daily or at least weekly basis to do something. So, the interest is, it's, it's, it's my professional opinion that at this, at this breakpoint, at this transition point, okay, you have to ask yourself what skill sets does the organization demand? And I think, you know, tech skills, procurement skills, and an ability to work with the water commissioners. You kind of help make the DPW a true DPW function when you interact, at least interact with the water district. So, the commissioners I know have discussed, you know, the job description at one of their meetings. I didn't like the markup that, you know, that I saw from, you know, from one of the commissioners. The present job description says that the DPW commissioner is under the general, general supervision of the town administrator in the policy direction of the DPW. I think that's pretty, I think that's pretty good. I don't think that that should, I don't think that that should change. Certainly the degree requirements and things that you have in the, in the DPW position in terms of education and engineering background and stuff, if you're prepared to, to step up by about 20 to 30% in the pay now, then keep it in, okay? I don't know that you are, okay? We'd love to have an engineer in that spot or someone with engineering training, but you're not going to get
Well, I guess what I'm really getting at is we have a board that really oversees this, but then we have some sort of disconnect by this email that's out there. And, you know, back when this was voted in, we didn't even have town administrators. Usually, generally what happened was up until the advent of town administrators, the go-to person was the town accountant. So, you know, I want to try and make the transition smooth, you know, and that's why I wanted to get us all together and sit down and it's transparent because we're in the public eye because that's generally where we have
And I can report, Mr. President, that so far, at least my interactions with the commissioners, you know, in this transition period have been, you know, have been pretty good so far.
So, I'd like to suggest that we get some sort of clarification on the 585 and maybe you have some concerns about some of the bumpy areas of what's in there that might, you know, help us all out on it. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I think it's going to require a review
Uh huh.
The whole thing and that
Yeah.
This is, obviously isn't the forum to do that tonight, especially with the rest of the agenda.
We all got a copy.
I think that, do you have a copy of the 585?
Yeah, we got a copy of the 585. I didn't have it before.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I interrupt for a second? For those people who have no idea what's being talked about here, the 585 is general legislation. The state legislature was petitioned back in 1971 to actually form a DPW commission and so that's what the 585 is. And I just, one question, I have no idea what email you're talking about, Jack. Is that something that's on the agenda? I don't see it.
I had it here, I don't know. Jim, did you have a copy of this?
I don't have a
Email from May 12th, 2009.
I don't have a copy of it.
I don't have a copy.
I'm not sure why we're discussing it because it's not something we
So, would a suggestion be that we have another meeting that's
I was going to suggest that we need to get together for, for a contract ratification anyways, okay?
Okay.
So, that would be an executive session sometime after town meeting?
Yeah, when, I don't know if you want to do that, if you want to frame an offering before a selection is made or after, that's a value judgment for you guys to make together.
Well, I, I think that there's already been an offer framed, but I mean to ratify it.
On a contract?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Well, I had proposed just a very brief, three-point, three paragraph proposal here which doesn't do anything
Oh, on the interim?
Right, on the interim.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, we're only discussing the interim right now because we
Okay.
We definitely need something further. Dick, jump in.
I was just going to ask, is there any way that in the interim period, you can use Mr. Howland as a consultant? Because, I mean, his, his contacts on that new projected road through the state are immeasurable. I mean, he, he had a lot of contacts over at that state DPW office and works well with them and they respect him.
We've, we've talked about involving them, short of the way.
Yeah.
We did, we did come up with the idea of having Bill come in on the meetings and stuff for the 58.
Yeah, okay.
But I think what we need to do is we need to solidify the leadership position in there right now
Yeah.
With the interim so that we can get down to business.
We promoted this guy and promoted from within and we don't want to, I want him to be the number one guy here, you know? Not that I don't value Billy's involvement and stuff, I, I don't want, you know, I want him to feel like this is all his.
Oh, no, the use of a, a contract service, which is what Bill would be at, at that point, would be on a per-case basis and an issue that we just don't have the expertise and his vast years
Right.
Would be of great assistance. And I would also seek consult with the town administrator and the board before we would necessarily do anything like that. I mean, you know, regardless, contract service isn't cheap, so.
Well, it, it is a state job, so you're going to have a lot of state engineers. And they pretty much are hot and fast in their belief on how things are going to be done and not done. I think, have you already gone through a lot of that so far?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Have you, have you dealt with the state engineers and pretty much
Well
How you're going to do things?
Yeah, we, we have company that's working through the road that deals primarily with the engineers
I think we're, we're rolling far off the topic here.
Yeah. Yeah.
I've been attending the home meetings on the 58 project, so I know pretty much much what is going on.
We'll tap that experience, JD. But what I want to do now is, I want to suggest that we put this on the agenda for the meeting after town meeting, what's that, the Thanksgiving week there?
The new classification hearing date is going to be what?
Eleven, the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
We can have it then.
We get this set in stone, so we can start to move forward here.
And we'll probably have town administrator candidates coming in to be interviewed that night, too.
So we could set an executive session for personnel matter, contract negotiations, and have Mr. Woods come in that night.
Excuse me?
Sure.
I'd like to put a foreman on, under the superintendent, because when it comes snowy, we have a lot of problems.
Isn't that something we can talk about at that meeting also?
All right.
We know you guys have to replace him.
You don't have to, Mr. Chairman, I think that's my, I think that's my deal.
Yes, it is your.
The interim superintendent, I'm looking for a recommendation from him, but that's, the counter-bargaining contract specifically addresses, specifically addresses that, so.
Right. You can update us that night, how's that?
I can work, yeah, I'll update you on that, that should be done by that time.
The man that became the interim, was he a foreman? And you just want to back?
We're going to put him in for a foreman, yes, yes.
What, I'm sorry, what was the date that we asked?
November twenty-sixth.
So Pete, if you can just put that on your calendar and...
Absolutely. Yep. Thank you.
We'll get this resolved. I know it's unsettling, John, I know it's unsettling, but we'll get it resolved on the twenty-sixth, okay? In the meantime, just keep your nose to the grindstone and be a sponge.
So, you know, we are meeting with a guy from the fifty-eight project next Tuesday, Joe Magny, myself, and Bill Hallinan.
Time and place?
I believe right downstairs.
Nine o'clock.
Okay. Anybody invited? One of the Selectmen want to sit in or something? Okay.
Sarah, I told Sarah.
Okay.
When is it?
Next Tuesday.
Okay.
All right, let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, United Nations proclamation.
I tabled this from last meeting, because I knew that, but I didn't realize that they were already going to have the function. But I still tabled it, and so it's up here, if you want to talk about it.
It's kind of a mute point, they were asking us to make a proclamation by the October twenty-fourth to celebrate their anniversary, and that's gone.
Well, at the time, I made the motion to table it. We didn't know that, and then Jim mentioned it to us, but I left it as a table.
Since it's a moot point, we ought to just move on.
So you want to make a motion that we table it?
Yeah, what's to table on? UN Day is over, it was last Thursday.
It's next year. Next year will be back to the background.
We could vote in advance.
All right, Sherburne Board of Selectmen Operating Procedures.
This is pretty lengthy, I'd like to put it off till...
I haven't, myself personally, had time.
With all the things that we have to do.
I haven't either, but I did, I did want to make a comment. I mean, would that fall, operating procedures for the Board of Selectmen, will that fall in a realignment as you look at our charter?
Yeah. But in this case, I think that each year you'd vote it. So as you have changes in the Board of Selectmen, you might read, is that what would happen, Jim? That each year you would vote the policy in, or would you make it part of your charter?
Right, the beginning of this now, I did include, I assure an agenda on how the, remember I said about the reading of the agenda? So that's, that's one thing. Now, on the matter of the policies, certainly any policy that, policies that the Selectmen agreed to would have to be consistent with, if you had a charter, you know, the charter, the town bylaws, good business practices, et cetera. I know I talked to Mr. Franny about this, you know, typically, a Board of Selectmen with policies like these in place would, within thirty days of the annual reorganization of the Board, you know, take the policy matters up.
Right.
Okay? And then over the course of the summer, generally you pick around Labor Day or so, for the Board themselves to get their goals and objectives together. A much simpler process than, you know, it can be a much easier process.
Would this be better served with your replacement coming in, maybe sitting down, and?
Yeah, it's here as an example, but for the discussion portion in possible action, if not tonight, some other time, was the question that Mr. Ward brought up about, you know, placing matters on the agenda, and how you deal with that. And it seemed to me that, you know, that Sherburne was a good example of that. That's why the agenda is there.
Can I make a comment on that?
Operating policies I did with them over a period of five months.
I did look at that. I haven't had time to look at the policies and procedures, but I do like the idea of that process, because basically that addresses the agenda, and then the Board, the full Board would vote on it right at the beginning of the meeting, and if they wanted something deleted or added, they could, I don't know if they could add, because that's a forty-eight-hour notice.
Yeah.
But you could delete. You could delete. And so I think that's where the possibility comes up, that allows the whole Board to act on that issue. So I like that.
All right, can we...
If I may say so, Jim, did you do a lot of work on this when you were town administrator there?
I did not, I had no part in the agenda format, that had been there long before I got there. But the operating policies and procedures, there'd been some difficulties with the administration in the Board of, in the Board of Selectmen. And so, you know, I broke out some stuff that we'd been doing since the nineties, and we went over, first an outline form, and then a section-by-section basis. Each meeting, each Selectmen's meeting, we devote about twenty minutes, you know, discussion to the next session. And I think we had on these about six readings. And then we started immediately on a set of finance policies for the town as well, and that took another, you know, another few months, or another couple of months. But, you know what, it's a, it's a pretty good framework. It defines your functional relationships, even among yourselves, if you have the time to, you know, to read any of that stuff, it's a civil document.
How about if we take up the one issue that Dick brought up at our meeting on the twenty-sixth? That gives everybody an opportunity, time to read. That specific area, at least. And then we can discuss that then.
Yeah, the agenda itself, the operating procedures, that's there for your information.
Right, right. And down the road, when the Board changes over and stuff, if they want to implement some of these other things.
Done.
I'm good with that.
More than welcome to do that, so. Is that good?
Yep.
Okay, approval of the minutes of October eighth and twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen.
I make a motion, we approve October eighth and October twenty-second.
And we have a motion in a second, any?
I'm going to, I'm going to have to abstain from the twenty-second, so I don't know if you want to handle it separately or not.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve October eighth.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on October eighth's minutes. Any comments, questions? Sorry, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. I make a motion, we approve October twenty-second.
We have a motion for October twenty-second.
Second.
And we have a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And I abstain.
Recused, okay. So the first one is unanimous, Michelle, the second one is four, zero. Good. All right, November Selectmen meeting schedule, meet at six-thirty prior to special town meeting on eleven-twelve, and hold a regular meeting on eleven-twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments, questions, concerns, recommendations? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, citizens' participation. You've still got a crowd left here. I'm absolutely amazed, thunderstruck. Anybody have anything they want to share with us?
Mr. Dunham does want to get an advertisement for the presentation on November first.
They all realize that we want to go home, they want to go home, too. Thank you, folks. Town Administrator notes.
I think you heard that under the review and recommendations of the special town meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Selectmen notes, anybody care to kick off? No volunteers? Jack?
Once again, the Town Administrator Search Committee is having, going to have two interviews on Wednesday, five on Saturday, and two on next Wednesday. And then, we're going to go through the process of vetting them out, make a selection. I'm hoping to have, I think it's a good time period to have them come before you're on November twenty-sixth, so probably should block out a couple hours of interviews and stuff. Depends on how many candidates the Search Committee wants to send here, so.
You're going to ask us to start that meeting early, twenty-sixth?
I'll let you know, because what might happen is if some of the members want to do five, so I want to do four, and I want to do three, so let's see who wins out. Because I think the more you have, the longer the process is, and the harder it is to make a decision.
If you've got some candidates that are close in their qualifications, you might end up with more than you want, but...
Yeah. Okay, so I just wanted to mention also, St. John, the Baptist Club is having a spaghetti supper this coming Saturday. They're a nice little organization, they got a beautiful little hall that holds about a hundred people, and they're trying to keep it up and running and stuff, so I'd like to advocate for people to go to that, it's from four to seven on Saturday. And one more thing, you're just going to have to listen to me, I've been cleaning up to open up an office in my house, so I came across, when I ran for Selectmen in nineteen-ninety-four, I had this to say, this was in the article. "One of the ideas to address the cost of building a new town hall is converting the Governor John Carver School to a municipal complex. Franny, a certified public accountant, suggests the school committee consider building a new elementary school complex, something he said is needed and could be funded with eighty-three percent reimbursement. The Governor John Carver School could then be converted to town offices, with the potential for the library occupying the rear building." Isn't it kind of strange that we have a brand-new town hall and a brand-new library, but we're still stuck with that school over there? If we had taken the opportunity, we could have got eighty-three percent reimbursement in that particular year. Equity aid was kicking in, we could have, it wouldn't have cost, we wouldn't have needed to do an override, we could have done it under two and a half. So, just wanting people, let people know, I know there's been a lot going around that I'm against the elementary school, I'm not. I think I, out of the four candidates, I was the only one that brought up anything about schools, none of the other ones brought up anything. So, I've always been on board to build something to replace that school over there.
Jesus, nineteen-ninety-four, Jack, I was just in junior high then.
You didn't get to see the picture, I had hair.
You had hair. All right, you done?
I'm all done.
How's that? Okay, Sarah?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dick?
I pass.
Welcome back. I hope you resolved all your...
I'm blurry-eyed with cranberries.
Helen?
Just a reminder that my office hours start back up this Saturday at Cornerstones Restaurant and Pub at noon time. Come on down and visit.
Oh, okay. They saved it all for me. Couple of items. Once again, I want to announce the Jingle Bell Fair at Our Lady of Lourdes, over here on Main Street, Carver Square, Friday, November eighth, two thousand and thirteen, four to eight p.m., and Saturday, November ninth, two thousand and thirteen, ten a.m. to three p.m. They'll have the big raffle, the Chinese raffle, giant menu of prizes to pick from, the magical Christmas tree, a hundred dollars in assorted lottery tickets on one tree, Santa, baked goods, hand-knits table, white elephants, snack bar and kitchen. Please go out and support a worthy cause and have some fun while you're doing it. I picked up a paper in my mail today, and it was a resignation from Helen Capello, and it just caught me by surprise. Helen's been such a stalwart member here in...
She's moving.
Council on Aging, but she's moving out of town.
Yeah, she's moving to Colorado, isn't she?
Yeah. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Helen for all she's done for the town through the years, between the Council on Aging and emergency management, and everything else she's contributed to. And we want to wish her the best of luck, fair winds in the following seas. So, thank you, Helen. Okay, reminder that Veterans Day, November eleventh, and that freedom isn't free. So, please go up and thank a vet for their service. Halloween, tomorrow night, all the ghosts and goblins will be out.
Thursday.
Thursday? Oh, I'm off a date, that's right.
The Red Sox are tomorrow night.
You'll have to forgive me, that's right.
You just thanked them.
But there'll be a lot of kids out walking the streets and everything, so be very careful. If you don't have to drive, don't. If you do, drive very carefully and slowly, okay?
Speaking of Halloween, I talked to a lady that lives on Pope Street. She says she gives out six hundred candy bars a night, that they just flock in there, so.
Whizness?
Pope Street, down off of Great Meadow.
Yeah.
I give out about ten.
Another shout-out, United States Marine Corps, two-hundred-and-thirty-eighth birthday is November tenth. Semperify to all the Marines out there. And I just want to say, please keep our servicemen and women serving around the globe in your thoughts and prayers, we're not out of the fire yet, and who knows when we will be, so. Those kids are out there protecting and serving for us. And last but not least, go Sox. Still got my beard. They better win tomorrow night, though, because the wife wants me to take it off.
We have executive session, don't we?
Well, do we have an executive session tonight?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, we will be going into executive session for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Library Council on Aging Director, and discuss litigation as an open, may have a detrimental effect on the position of the public body, and we will not be returning to open session. God bless you, the town of Carver, and the United States of America, thank you for being here.
I'll second that.
Well, he can't make a motion.
So moved.
So moved, in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Jack says yes.
Go call.
Sarah says yes.
Mike says yes.
Vic Ward says yes.
Helen says aye.
Genanamous.